We're meeting to look at the pay scales and the new, new job, what, job descriptions for given positions.
I'm gonna do a roll call real quick, Mr. Andy. That's okay. I'll do a roll call. Randy Rantz.
Here.
Ms. Barton.
Linda Ballard.
Here.
Erin Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Eric Castles. Johnny Fallon.
Hey, I thought this table was supposed to be fixed.
They're here.
They need to be fixed.
And they're gonna be put together tomorrow.
Who's that, Jane, where else was there?
Dana ordered them. They just got here and I told her I had the workforce meeting yesterday and then the board meeting today and she could work on them tomorrow.
But he's just gonna vote on this today. And we make the right decisions and the right choices, that we be pleased in your sight.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We've already had a roll call, right? All right. We're here. First on the agenda is to consider revisions to the board's salary schedules, job descriptions, and other documents that may be warranted as a result of state law.
I did my best to put these in order that made sense with all that we have to do. So the first thing in your folder is the actual Act 311 that was passed by the legislator this summer. The governor signed it sometime within the last two weeks. And the reason for the special meeting is that the salary schedules had to be, and job descriptions had to be updated before June 30th. So thank you for flying in by the seat of pants for this special meeting. Just a summary of the law that I highlighted here is that this act, on the second page, that the salary is provided, the job descriptions be specific in that they identify and describe the employee's responsibilities. So that's one reason, is to look at the job descriptions. And I, it says it also reinforces the previously stated or enacted law that teachers have uninterrupted 45 minutes of instructional time per day or the equivalent for the week. And so that's something else we have to look at here to make sure that we're addressing. And the double I's is that we develop a uniform supplemental salary schedule, and so that's in here. And with that, the law requires that certified employees be paid a minimum of $30 per hour net. So we've looked at that with the business department and come up with a salary schedule that ensures that for any outside work that is not a part of the job description, that they will earn a net of $30. And then your non-exempt employees like secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodians, that their compensation be in accordance with the fair labor standards, which I will tell you what those are when we get to that schedule there. So that basically is the act that has prompted this discussion today. So the first, or I guess something I want to make sure that we're clear on with the job descriptions when we get to that is that we're not adding anything to job descriptions. We're just trying to go back and make sure that they're reflective of the work that we have expected or that teachers performed last year and years before. And so we're not adding anything to a job description. We're just making sure that we're specific in those, in those responsibilities. So the first thing that I have in your folder is the stipend salary schedule. And on that, it's pinned together, but you'll see the proposed one on top and the current one behind it. The current stipend rate was adopted back in 2020. And it kind of lists out the rate of pay for teachers when they participate in professional development, paraprofessionals when they participate in professional development, I like these, professional development. There's a presenter rate for those who are presenting, planning, summer remediation, seat time, summer remediation, planning, all the way down to like credit recovery and tutoring and homebound. So what we did is we went back through on the new one, the proposed one for 2024, and then highlighted are the changes that we made. And that basically was making anything that wasn't $35 for certified teachers, we bumped it up to $35. And so the participant, I did go ahead and bump up the presenter to 40, so it's an additional $5 an hour if you're the one presenting. And on down, anything that wasn't 35, we made 35. So I guess that is the first thing we need to look at. What I do want to say is that with the exempt, non-exempt employees, that 1.5 of their hourly rate, currently minimum wage is $7.25. So if you multiply that times 1.5, that rate is $10.88. We're already above that because we have $15 in the salary schedule. So we're definitely in line, even above what the state is requiring in that.
So Nick, why did custodians stay the same?
Because it was their, the non-exempt employees, just like paraprofessionals, $15 an hour, which is more than what the state requires at 10.88.
Probably paying $4 more than the state.
Was that open for discussion if anybody wants to? All right, any discussion on that?
We're gonna need, vote on each one of these individually.
Well, see, Randy, that's what I just wanted to talk to Nick about. My intention yesterday when I met her and David and Angela was to abstain because I think the state is forcing us to do something that I'm not ready to do as a policy maker because the board makes the policy. So if I abstain on everything, that means it's not gonna pass. So I don't want to stop progress because there are things that need to be done. June the 30th is not enough time for them to come and tell us what we should or shouldn't do without looking at whatever it is that we need to look at because money is involved. I talked to David about... I talked to David about if we keep reaching, 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 eventually what we're reaching at is not gonna be there. That's one of my concerns, but he's insured that that's gonna be hopefully okay. Again, for 30 years, I've never been forced to vote on something without looking at it. And I think this right here is forcing me to vote because I haven't looked at any of this. I trust what the superintendent has done, I trust what David has done, I trust what Angela has done, I don't trust what the state is forcing me to do. And as a, as a board member, our number one job is to make policy and make sure that the budget is done. And I have a conflict with that, so I'm telling her, you know, let's, let's go through all this, let me decide, because I'm not gonna stop progress, because we need to have this done. But I just feel like them doing this last week and telling us by June the 30th, this gotta be done, is really unfair.
Oh, I agree.
I agree.
And yeah, because I think, you know, they've done the best.
Well, it needs to be planned, does to do a lot of work.
Right, yeah.
Over, I mean, a lot of deciphering what the law said and a lot of work over the weekend. So if it makes you feel better, let's just take a, make a motion for each one of the items, and that way we can pass or abstain on anything else. But this right here is just the salary schedule.
Because that's the reason why I called vote, to make sure he was gonna be here so he wouldn't have no issue.
You just found out this morning.
Yeah, yeah, because he told me he had another meeting. And I was hoping that, you know, this wouldn't be an issue for us today, so we'll move.
Well, the 30th falls on Sunday, so we're just trying to get it in before. So are there any concerns about, I mean, the $35 is mandatory by law. And so we just need to up that, and I'm absolutely open to any conversation about anything else on here, we just have to have it ready to go.
So we need a motion. So I'll take a motion that we accept this.
I second.
I want a favor.
You don't have to be happy about it.
Well, I guess I need to decide, are you gonna do it as individually, or you gonna go through all of it first and then come back and do all of it together?
I thought you wanted to do it individually, like just make this.
Yeah, we're gonna do.
Just salary schedules.
And then the teacher's job description.
Yeah.
It's one of those, which is right.
Okay, Kaylee, put 51% yes. 49% no. No, yes.
All right, so yes on this one. All right, one down. All right, so the next thing we have in here is job description amendments. And we obviously have a lot of job descriptions in this district and do not have the time on that to go through every single one of those. And so I'm just gonna kind of ask for us to be able to use the language to update all of the job descriptions based on that. So I did put in here just the teacher's job description because as we started looking through these, we realized we had updated these job descriptions with COVID, and so we need to take the COVID stuff out. And so on the first page of the teacher, and this is gonna be in every single job description, so if you approve this, then we can go and edit all of them. But the D prepares virtual lessons and plans as necessary, that's not necessary anymore because COVID is gone. On the second page, that D item uploads virtual lessons in a timely manner consistently pairs in school directives. And environmental prepares for and conducts virtual instructions, remains accessible to school-based and virtual students. And then on the back page, under professional responsibilities, 13 says complies with all school opening and COVID-19 policies, and lists out all of those. And so we'd like to remove those from all of the job descriptions. And then the reason it's been brought up now is because of number 14, and what we've always used is just a very generic, assumes additional responsibilities as the principal may assign. And with this Act 311, it says it's got to be specific. And so we need to list out the things that are expect, or the things that teachers have been doing and are expected to do. So that's where, if you'll look at the proposed amended teacher job description, that's the next page here, the instructional components. This basically is just a bullet list of things that teachers do. They fulfill duties traditional to the teaching profession, they write lesson plans, they instruct students, they collaborate with colleagues and departments, they grade papers, take and report attendance, enter an average grades, maintain positive and timely interaction with parents, serve on school committees or task forces that contribute to school improvement, or educational coaching and best practices. So those are instructional components that are specific that teachers do. Supervision, you supervise students whether on or off campus if you're at a school-related event, supervise students prior to school and/or drop-off when assigned, so some teachers have morning duty or afternoon duty, when you're assigned, it's something that you do. Supervision of students in classroom, supervision of students between classes, during recess, during lunch, and at assemblies, supervision of students after school or picked up on assignment. Part three is non-instructional components. Teachers have and are expected to attend meetings generally associated with the instruction of their students, attend faculty, staff, and department meetings, attend training sessions, IEP meetings, parent-teacher conferences, back-to-school and open house events, graduation, all those acronyms, the professional growth plan, all that that they're talking about, attend school board and committee meetings upon request. And then the second page, extracurricular, number four, this particular amend, amendment says attend and work concession engagement of no more than five athletics per school year, and attend all meetings and functions of those activities with clubs and groups. And those are the two that I would like for us to discuss because as we began looking at what our teachers do, if you look at number five, I said skip four and go to five. Events attended, fall festival, sporting events, clubs, student enrollment, a lot of these we already pay our teachers for. We pay them for parent orientation nights and open houses, we pay them for after-school tutoring, literacy nights, report card pickup days like your parent-teacher conferences, after-school detention, attendance recovery, band rehearsal, we already pay our teachers for a lot of those things. When we started looking at it, the things that jumped out to us were that we're not paying for gate duty, and we're not paying for if you sponsor a club, and those additional responsibilities. So I would like to hold off on that and discuss that in another item to see about how we could compensate teachers for the gate duties and the others. So if everything else y'all could approve to add to the agenda.
Yeah, because if we can, let's deal with this one last.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what I had to, the courses and concerns.
All right, but I think we needed to have that conversation so you understand the rest of it. So let's table that one.
Table in four and five.
Yeah, we just.
And we're voting to approve one through three, right?
Y'all wanna do that, or you wanna come back and vote on the whole job description?
Yeah.
You might as well come back.
Okay, that's fine. The other copies that I have here is just, these would be the amendments to the principal's job descriptions, and then the supervisors and directors' job descriptions. Of course, it's just making sure we outline all the things that are expected that come along with your 12-month status and the stipend that you are, so I'll stick it over.
Now, rather than just hearing from Nick, Elena, Katie, what do you guys, any principal that's here, what's you guys thought, you know, on this? Because, and the reason why I'm asking, because again, I'm better uncomfortable voting for something that I have not looked at myself. So I'm gonna rely on what you guys tell me to determine whether I'm gonna vote yeah or no. So if you can give me some input on what we're talking about, I would greatly appreciate it. So I mean, it can be generic or whatever you want to tell.
Are you, do you want to know their thoughts on teacher or principal?
On the, on the, what we're doing, the description and all that. Because I'm assuming that you guys have a lot of stuff that you, that you have to do.
Well, when this came up, and you know, Ms. McHan let us know, my first thought was that, you know, it, it kind of felt like it fell under other job duties and stuff, but not excessively. So you want them to, I, I push it towards my teachers that when they do a gate duty, usually it's two gate duties, like one in the spring and one in the fall is usually what they do. And the kids love their teachers to come to their games. And so after they get done with gate duty, me, Courtney, or Jordan are at the game, we collect the money, you know, we take it back to the school, let the teachers stay and watch the kids play and have those conversations and build relationships with kids in that way. So I always felt like that that was a great benefit to them. But I also understand that they are taking time out of their, their day, and it's after work hours to be able to be compensated for those types of things. So my concerns though are where is this money coming from, how are we gonna be able to pay? You know, because we talked about, you know, possibilities of it coming out of the gate from the, from, you know, from the school's board, or is it coming from general funds? In my thought process, I think that it's more work on Jenna and Carlin, David, to, you know, pay it out of general fund. I mean, that's just my personal opinion, just costs, I mean, you know, keeping more paperwork for my secretary to send in and people filling out paperwork saying that they covered duties, you know, I just hate to put any more on them because we already know.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? All right, we're basically have tables for right now. We're gonna come back to that, right?
Which one?
What, what she's talking about, what she's been talking about as far as.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine, no, you're comfortable.
Right now, we're talking about the principal and assistant principal amended job description, right?
I mean, it looks like it's jobs that we already.
That's what we've moved on to.
We already do a lot of things. It's just, in, in their job description just doesn't list out all of the expectations. And this just gets very clear. I mean, it's things like you're expected to maintain a campus that's clean and condition, you're expected to manage student discipline, you're expected to attend meetings and host faculty meetings, and attend job trainings, and if you're high school, you're expected to be a member of LHSAA and other athletic professional associations. Represent the school in all functions and meetings at a school representative of where a representative is required.
So Nick, tell me what all functions mean.
So like, y'all are principals?
Because it's impossible for you to go to all, you can't go there. So if you don't go, are you gonna be penalized for not going? And if you go, are you gonna be paid for that? Those are the type things that I'm looking for, because you can rest assured when a policy is made, once it's made, somebody's gonna find something that they can bring up as an issue, and before I do anything, I'm not speaking for the other one, I'm talking about me personally. I like to know exactly what it is so I can be comfortable doing what I'm doing, and I'm not comfortable doing this right now. And, and my, my, my aspiration is to vote no on all of them, because again, I'm speaking for me, I'm responsible for what people ask me outside of these walls. What happened, and I can't tell them what happened right now, because I'm going through something, not the superintendent's fault, it's the state's fault by forcing us to do something that I personally am not ready to do. They can speak for themselves, I'm speaking for me. So, so in order for me to get to where I need to get, I need to be able to ask you guys questions to satisfy me, because if not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain, I'm not gonna vote no, I'm gonna abstain because I don't have enough information, is my point. So if we can get to that point to where I'm comfortable, I don't have a problem. But to subvert, you know, me being not ran this issue, but I mean, we gotta, because the superintendent can't tell me everything.
Correct me if I'm wrong, on the principal and the assistant principal, all this is just listing like all the extra stuff that you guys do. It doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna pay them more when they do these things, they're already.
They're already getting a 12-month stipend, a salary, and an additional stipend. And that stipend is different based upon the number of events. Like the high school stipend is different than, the junior high is different than the elementary, because obviously the high school principal has a lot more sports that somebody has to attend.
It's called administrative duty, just what it's called in the checks, that's what it says, that's your stipend is added in, right? And it's broken down by like.
So now we just have to.
It's just that they said the job description has to be specific. It's, it's not generic anymore, so we listed out all the things that they do. And, and to your point, and Elena, you can speak for yourself, but if you don't go to something, then your assistant principal goes to it.
We have to divide it, because especially in the spring, we need to have baseball, softball, everything's going on at the same time, we just have to split, like I go to one, then Ms. Wildson's go to one, because I can't go to one, Abby goes to a lot, a lot of the functions, so she's administrator, so we just have to divide.
Because I've had people come say, well, why wouldn't a principal have the basketball hand, why wouldn't a, those type of things. So again, I need to make an answer.
We have to divide and conquer, so everybody who's an administrator can serve as what they're just here.
And, or you're gonna point at that's me, right? Okay.
I think this is common sense thing that we do, they're just things.
Right, they're right.
It's things that you know, if you're gonna be a principal, you even know you're gonna do these things.
And I'm sure y'all do way more than is listed here.
Now, this is not filed under Act 311, right?
The job descriptions have to be reflective of the specific, hang on.
Not necessarily paying them more with the description.
Right, it says that the salaries provided in the salary schedule shall be considered compensation for the work performed by each employee within his prescribed duties and responsibilities, which include only those specifically identified and described in the employee's job description. So no longer can you say at any other, it has to be specific. And so that's where this, I mean, everybody has worked hard to try to come up with what are the expectations for our administrators. And then the other amendment there is just for supervisors and directors, the same thing, just, it's just the language, and that's what we're asking for, is just permission to be able to use this language to go in and so that Angela and we can get together and update every single job description.
But y'all seen these, right? I mean, they seen this type of work, they want to be the jobs.
Who?
The supervisor.
No, they have not, and I can, I can absolutely share that, because this is hot off the press, I just got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Monica, Rebecca, y'all wanna look at? And you're.
I wanted to, I wanted to plan the work, but it doesn't tell me.
Yes, yeah.
I just looked through the principal one, and there's nothing on there that we don't want or need to do.
Yeah.
And I saw a copy too.
Yeah.
They're just so great.
I know you have a great.
He'll say that needs to be.
Hit facts occasionally, rats.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Would any of you administrators have any problem with these being added to your job description?
The only thing, no, absolutely not. The only thing is on there, like it says attend graduation, maybe be more specific of.
Okay.
Four years of school.
Yeah.
Or maybe attend functions like that, four years.
Right, absolutely.
Nobody can ever come back and say.
Yeah, yeah, I gave mine away.
I think we can, I think we can list like an award names.
Yes, we can put graduation slash awards, yeah.
Maybe raise an award, maybe something come up that you can't make.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I need to put something like, with exception to.
Okay.
Or you can say, or appoint, but it's.
That's a good idea.
I can't call them.
So it's covered.
It's covered. I just don't want there to be any gray area for, like, I don't have a problem with that, but you know, if somebody from the outside looking in says, oh, well, you know, Ms. Gilpatrick wasn't at her variety show, that's because my son was at shooting school.
Thank you, Melissa.
But I appointed, I appointed someone to cover me to be there in my.
But you had someone there that would take care of this.
So what if I say, attend graduation slash awards programs, or appoint a designated to attend in your place?
So if you appoint a designated, that person pays if they're not.
Who would that designated be? The elementary principal, or your parent?
Are they telling you to be specific? So a specific need, you're.
So like, in, in your place, did the activity take place after school? No, so the person that you designated was your instructional coach who was already at work?
Gotcha.
So, but I think that brings up a good point, that if you're appointing somebody who's not under an administrative stipend, that that person could fill out the form that's coming up later to be reimbursed for that. Yeah, yeah.
Well, on that point, we won't get into that.
Yeah, but those would have to be approved, and we'll talk about that, yes. That's good verbiage, so we can add that.
So everybody's comfortable with it?
Supervisors, did y'all look at?
Elena, I see you, you comfortable with this? Because I would expect y'all to say no against what the superintendent says, I'm asking.
I mean, we do all of these things anyway, you know, so.
Well, but then it's better principal.
Right.
So she knows, she walked in those shoes.
I think at the high school, of course, there are way more activities, of course, than.
Right.
Any of, I mean, not just sports things, but just all over.
Well, speaking of the high school, if a teacher has to attend graduation minutes after hours, what do they do?
Not if it's in the job description.
So is it in there?
It's in the amend, it's in there, because you're not, you expect them to come, but nobody's penalized if you don't come, you know? You don't have to be there, yeah.
So it's not mandatory to the fact that a participant. So it's not mandatory that the faculty participate? It's always been that way?
It's always been that way from the top of there. We said, you know, the seats out there, if they wanna come there.
But if they do come.
But if they come, then they get paid.
That's a, to do if they come. It's not a requirement, it's a job.
Right, but if they do, it's a get paid.
Personal choice, yes.
So David, if all the high school faculty came, what would that cost?
I'm not proposing that.
But I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, let's fix that.
That's what he just said.
If they're mandatory, if they're not mandatory.
I think the, I think the thought process behind this is that you're not mandated to come to these things, but if you come to them, there's no expectation you're gonna get paid. You know, because we're not telling. And we had this conversation, Alana and I did, about you're being told to come to a professional development, and you get paid for that. But if you choose to come to graduation, or choose to come to acquire concert, or a band concert to listen, you're not gonna get paid because it's a choice, you're not being told you have to.
If they're coming on their own free will.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's not the difference between being told or not required.
So Alana, I guess, a principal can appoint whoever their designated is. That doesn't have to be specific, as long as it's a designated. Because I think it would be complicated to tell you to tell me who this designated is gonna be today, when you don't know who that person is. So the designated is specific, and whoever you appoint would fall in line with what the policies here be. Yeah. Or in a principal, whoever. It doesn't really matter, as long as you're appointing that person as your designated. So that would fall under whoever it is.
And if it's after hours, then we'll just complete the form for that person to be compensated, you know, if they're not already compensated as an administrator.
I mean, could it be a simple, maybe something at the tops instead of saying, like, shall be expected to perform the following duties? Just maybe one word there that it makes it seem like it doesn't have to be every single one on here?
Yes.
Any of the following, or? I mean, I'm just thinking about, like, the concerns that you guys are having, like, one of these, attend IEP, IEP meetings. There's a lot of directors and supervisors that will never have to, you know, to do that. But, you know, but then there's that attend graduation again, and does that mean that I go to all seven? And, um.
Right, right, right.
Is there just a simple fix there, maybe just at the top of the list, that somehow states, we could ask you to do all of these, but we might not, but you're not getting paid regardless?
Yes, yes, yes.
Not subject to payment.
Yes, but I know supervisor, supervisor, only graduation, they have.
Oh, that's a good idea. Angela, a good idea. Let's just say, rather than shall, just say teachers may be expected to perform. May be expected, may be expected, and that way, it's not a you have to.
Teachers or supervisor.
Oh. We would need to do the teacher one, the principal one, and the director supervisor.
But I mean, nigga, the supervisor and the superintendent is no holds barred. I mean, that's part of your contract, so, I mean, you can ask them to do anything, that would be reasonable and logical, because it would fall under that specific contract. So I don't think it would be an issue with directors and superintendent.
Except, like she was just saying, she actually, as the sped director, is responsible for all seven schools. And so is she expected to do attend all seven graduations and all.
You're a supervisor, so that's what you get paid for. No, but realistically, that's what a person would think.
Yeah.
But I think, I can see how it can be a verb, too.
But I think may is a very good.
It's always a key.
Yeah, we'll run it through you.
Will you meet me there to do your job? Could you be?
That happens a lot.
Actually, less than fifty percent.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? And do we wanna still table this, or do we wanna go, do we wanna wait until we have the conversation about the extracurricular?
You wanna get the extra in there?
Yeah, I'll talk that to whoever here.
Yes, okay. All right, so we'll put that to the side.
I think Rana got a little grouchy.
I told her it was bad.
Yeah.
It was quiet and great.
Yeah. We gotta check that hard out there.
I'm trying to see him.
All right, so the next thing in the folder are the guidelines for additional compensation. And so with this, it opens up, you know, what if someone does perform extra duties, and how does that process look? And so this guidelines, I'm not gonna read the entire thing to you, but the high points that I wanna make sure I hit is that, as a number two, any employee in a certified position who performs approved work beyond the scope of their prescribed duties must have prior approval obtained from their direct supervisor. So it could not be that, oh, I decide, you know, I'm gonna turn into my principal, I've been doing grading papers at home, I've been doing this, I've been doing this and this, and I want to get paid for it. You have to have a process in place where you ask permission beforehand and get it approved to be able to do that. And one of those examples might be when you have to have a designated need who's not an administrator, who's going to be the person in charge, and we would need to pay, you know, but that would need to be pre-approved. So in order to get preapproval, you would have to, A, submit a written description of the services to be performed, and the estimated time to complete the task; B, obtain prior written approval from your immediate supervisor and district administration, because immediate supervisors don't always have a funding source. And so the money's gonna have to come from somewhere, and it's gonna either have to be approved by Ms. Wiley, or Ms. Meredith, or myself, or maintenance, or, you know, whoever. C, obtain supplemental written approval if your time exceeds your original request, basically. So if I thought it was gonna take four hours, but it ended up taking five or six, I can't add on five and six without preapproval. So this kinda lays it out for you. And this must be turned in on the sheet that's behind it within seven calendar days of the event that's going to take place. So the form is on the back, and it basically just lines it out, it has the employee's name and their employee ID number, the request for the date of the activity, whether or not it's for a close quarter organization, how much time they expect. This form would also be used in the event that a teacher did not receive their forty-five minute or equivalent planning period. So that, but they would have to say in here which days the planning was not provided, and why that planning was not provided. And we have really harped on this this past year about making sure that we honor that forty-five minutes or equivalent, and I feel like we are well above that amount. I mean, I polled all the principals, you know, today, to just verify how many, like, how long planning periods are. And with that, we are well over the requirement. Like, I mean, high school is over it by seventy-two minutes, junior high by forty-eight minutes, and elementary by a hundred and eighty minutes. So we're well over the amount there. So I will say that if a teacher does not get their planning period, it's coming out of your budget, because we've been, you know, you know you're not allowed to pull them out of. Now, your PLCs, we call them teacher plumbing planning now, and I know the shift has been that they're planning together, and so that does count as instructional time. This, I think, is referring to calling them out for IEP meetings or 504. Like, if you call them out every single day and they're never getting their forty-five minutes, which ends up being about a hundred and eighty minutes per week, so if they end up not doing that, then this form would also be used to ask for that compensation.
So nigga, for checks and balances, person, at what point do you see this? Do you, because there's nowhere on it, it's just the supervisor.
No.
So you don't never, you don't never have to review and see?
So typically, it goes to, like, the supervisor, so if this were a teacher, then the supervisor would be the principal, and then the principal would give it to the, their supervisor, and then the funding, because sometimes the supervisor is not the person who has control of the funding that would, that would come from. So like, if it was a general fund, I'm at the bottom. I'm the one who approves.
Well, that's what I was about to say, because if it's money coming out of general fund, then you being responsible, then you should be the person that's reviewing it or something.
So general fund will all come out of me, if it's coming out of Title I or Title II, Ms. Wiley will sign off on that. If it's coming out of Monica's budget, it'll be her signing, Rebecca's budget, redesigned budget, and there's all these different budgets, and that's why they have that second, that second place. And all that has to be approved before, you know, it happens. So, I thought that was a pretty good little form, so. Are we okay with this form? Do we need to make a motion on that?
Like, before it happens, so say you don't know you're gonna miss your planning period for that week, and you do miss it.
Then that would be afterwards, because it says which planning days was not provided and reasons.
Okay, so then this could be from prior weeks.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not planning on any of that happening. All right, a motion?
I make a motion to.
The guidelines for additional compensation.
All in favor?
Sixty percent.
Does that have to be thirty or thirty-five percent? Hey, it's gotta be on the paper. All right, so the next item in your folder is a stipend rate for academic or service club sponsors. And so one of the things that we noticed when we went through the amendments to the job description is we do a good job of paying our people for professional development or tutoring and that sort of thing. What we don't do is pay, like, our club sponsors and our activity sponsors any additional compensation. So we did some research and looked at what other districts were doing, and thought this would be a good place for us to incentivize those people who take on those additional responsibilities and compensate them for the work that they do. We modeled this stipend rate for club sponsors after another district, I thought it was a really good idea. Of course, our amounts are a little different.
What district was that, nigga?
DeSoto Parish. I did a Google search this weekend, and I looked at everybody's plans who were online, and I really liked how this was set up, because it basically is tiered in levels of clubs, and so there's like an A level, a B level, and a C level. So an A level would be just your basic club at school that does not have a state or national competition. So my thought immediately went to, like, student council, okay? They don't go and compete anywhere, and they don't go and run for office at a higher level, but they do a lot of good things for the school. And so that would be a basic level club. The next level up would be a club or organization that competes at another level, and, because I'm thinking like your speech squad, who goes and competes, or your JAG, who goes and competes, your Beta, who goes and competes. And, or you may be running for a state office or a state level position. And so that's kind of an upper level of just a basic school club. And then the third, which we don't have any at this time, but I thought this would be a great incentive, is if we have a club or organization that has members who run at a national level, or compete at a national level, because I know they have these contests, and I know our kids are very capable, and if we want to push that, I thought this was a great incentive to do that. So those amounts for the, the level A would be a three hundred dollar stipend, the level B would be a five hundred dollar stipend, and then level C would be a seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend. And those amounts would be paid at the end of the school year, when verified by the principal. And what I really love about this plan is there's a set of criteria. And so with the criteria, to be eligible for the stipend, the club or organization must complete a minimum of four of the nine items. And so there's a, kind of a list of nine items here. One is that they pay state or national membership dues. Two is that they host monthly meetings with at least fifty percent membership and attendance with a minimum of five kids. Three, attend both district and state convention. Four, have a minimum of two teams who compete at a district or state level competition. Five, conduct at least one score community service project. Six, fundraise a minimum of five hundred dollars for the club and their activities. Seven, participate in an awareness week, like CTE month, National Beta Club Week, 4H Week. Eight, serves two events each semester, like, I know we have those who work open house, they go out to Kelly and work those family events, or it could work like Special Olympics, as long as you're contributing to induce some type of community service. And then nine would be raising five hundred dollars for charity. I know we have some groups who are constantly raising money to give away in our community. And so I thought, you know, this really makes us mindful of giving our kids opportunities to serve and to give back and do, and the teachers who sponsor these clubs do a lot of this work, and I think they ought to be compensated for it. And so we looked at that stipends.
On number nine, go ahead, Rana.
I was just gonna say, all these, all these clubs and organizations are very beneficial to the kids, so I really think that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And if there's some incentive of, you know, I want this club to be this, then you now have an expectation of what needs to happen or to get that budget money.
Yeah, Rana, I think just go back to what you and I were talking about months ago. Rather than them having a five hundred dollar charity, because sometime money is an impediment. Let them do some type of volunteering in the community or whatever, so, because some kids or some clubs may not be able to make that five hundred dollars. So if you can do that and/or, give them something where they can do, you know, be involved in the community, you know, if they can do the fundraising, but if they don't meet this five hundred dollar barrier, I don't want that to prevent them from doing it.
But you don't have to, you have to do four of the nine. So any four of the nine. So you could do the community service instead.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, but then we do have clubs, like, we have.
We have club days, so that automatically you're gonna get.
Absolutely.
We have clubs every month.
Yes.
You know, so that's a given.
Yes.
And if you pay dues, like Beta and National Society, that's.
That's a given.
And that's all the cycles, always does the community service project. Beta usually does something.
Yes, yes. So it just kinda lays out some criteria for, and if you wanna have a club where you don't do any of this, you can. You can be during those times, you just don't get the stipend. The stipend is to reward those who go above and beyond and provide experiences for our students where they give back to the community.
So, Alana, those sponsors are chosen by a principal at the school, or how is it?
Typically, they just, most of them just want to have a club, so they'll say, well, I wanna have, say, a book club, or I wanna have a discipline, and they'll, they just write it and they prove it so.
On four, could we also, you know, it says, each academic or service club shall have only one faculty sponsor. Well, if two faculty members want to get together and be one, and come together two, if they split that three hundred, five hundred, or seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's going to be two of them?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So if more than one.
Because some years we've had two Beta sponsors. Like, there's usually one that is like in charge of it, and then one's usually kind of a, you know, helps do the money or do something, so.
So if more than one sponsor this stipend, will we split? Okay. And I don't know if I clarified this, but this, this club sponsors is for non-12-month employees. We do have a couple that are 12-month employees who are already compensated for these things. So this is just your regular nine-month teachers who don't have any extra compensation. So number three says stipends we pay out at the end of the year upon verification from the principal, and I will work on a form to give the principal so that they have a checklist and can verify that these things were done and they're eligible for that stipend. And on the back page, is something else that got, we got thinking about was overnight trips. And so you do have some organizations, and the one that came to mind was like Speech Squad, who goes to, or, you know, an overnight trip where they compete. And so we wanted to make sure we had something in here, that if a non-12-month and certified employee takes students overnight to a state or national convention to compete, or to a required camp for their club, then they'll receive this stipend amount. So if this trip is four or less hours, they'll get a hundred and forty dollar flat rate. If it's more than four hours, it would be a two hundred and eighty dollar flat rate. And then the B part is if it's not a certified teacher who's going in that capacity. And that way, because you think about, right now, we have teachers, they just volunteer their time and go and spend the weekend, or go spend a couple, you know, nights away from their family, and this would be a way for us to compensate them for that time. And then number two, thought was interesting, that if a club sponsor, including 12-month employees, has a student or team that places first in a state or national convention, then they would earn a two hundred dollar, kind of, you know, stipend bonus for getting their kids to that level of. to that level of recognition. All right, so? Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I think they should make them feel appreciated.
From the audience?
Everybody's good.
All right, so?
I mean, if you look at the numbers here.
Oh, y'all, y'all said that, yes, on the back. Yeah, we did the calculations.
It's very small compared to what they do.
And it could go up if other clubs decide they wanted to. These numbers are based on what happened last year and where I thought different clubs would fall. But yeah, so if we had, if we had done this last year, we would be looking at about $6,800. And I think it's worth it to provide those opportunities for our kids and to acknowledge the work that teachers put into these commitments. Do we need a motion? Yeah. Y'all have any questions or anything I didn't think about in there?
I think it's great, I think most of the teachers take on these clubs because it's a passion project. Because like when Miss Boy had Geocash, but nobody else in, at the high school obviously feels.
Yeah, yeah.
She, so it's not there right now, but typically, you know, the people who are doing that are just doing it because they love it. So, I mean, to give them anything, but, I mean, as somebody who has spent a night in a hotel with 100 kids, I mean, that $50 would not have hurt my feelings, you know, for whatever it works out to me. I mean, it's a lot of work, and it's not easy, so, yeah.
And saying that, with overnight trips, so you said if you sponsor a club, then you just split the stipend. So is that the same as like Speech Squad, I don't know. And it's two people who live overnight, one of them is like.
They would both be eligible for that overnight stipend.
Or would they have to split it?
I would not think they would split it.
They would each get it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I would think that would be per person.
All right, let's get back to where we were on the stipend rate for academic or service club sponsors. Do we need a motion for a provision?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Eight of five, Katie.
We're winning them over.
You're coming, yeah, you're coming.
All right, um, gotta look at my, okay, the next thing in your folder is one thing that we started looking at. Of course, our coaches, if they have two sports, they are a 10-month employee with a stipend based upon their level of responsibilities, head coach, coordinators, assistant coach. Drill team, if you have CEP, CP is all listed out there. What we have here is the high school on the front page, and then the sports that are offered. The second page is the junior high, and what we realized in the conversation is the very bottom, we have elementary faculty who serve as cheer and dance sponsors as well. Typically, your coaches are gonna be volunteer, your parents who are wanting to do that. But if you have a faculty sponsor who is willing to take on that responsibility, then we kind of figured, based upon the time, that if we should be able to give them a $300 stipend for that. So we added that to the bottom.
All right, have any of these changed?
Um. No, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Yes, they're all the same. Because we added the CDL, and then the head coach, and y'all voted on that back in.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So basically, nothing's changed on this.
High school's in line with high school, junior high's in line with junior high, and then we just added the elementary. And we added cross-country to both of those sports as well. Because at the time, in 2020, we weren't doing that.
The only thing that's added is the elementary cheer.
Yes.
And the junior high participates under like fishing, different things like that, but it's just gonna go through the hospital.
So nothing's changed. I guess we do need.
Yeah, we add the elementary.
I make a motion we approved the coaches' pay schedule.
All in favor?
All right, so the last thing, yeah, and it is pending on the job description too, is gate duty. And I figured this is one that, you know, we'll probably have some conversation about. But felt like we pretty much pay our teachers for extras, but one of the assumed responsibilities that we have not is gate duty. And so you can go either way, we can adjust or whatever. But one way is just to add it to the job description specifically and say you're required to participate in no more than however many gate duties per year. At the same time, you know, we start thinking about teachers do give up extra time, and I know sometimes it's hard for y'all to find gate workers, and this would be an extra, a way to have a little extra compensation for those who do sign up for it. Other, a lot of other districts do pay their gate duty. We've had a conversation with Angela about, you know, that, and we've done some research to find out. Other, and so they do. So I just kind of wanted to look and see what kind of numbers we'd be looking at here. And so I talked with the junior high and the high school and elementary about how many workers they typically needed for gate duty, how many hours they were expected to be there, how many events, if we paid out at $35 an hour plus the benefits. And so those totals are out on the right-hand side. And so if you looked at a total cost, you would be looking at $43.03 for the junior high and $81.33 for the high school, let me do some math here.
I really don't see where, you know, you can write in, as far as the job description, write in that part of their job description is to do gate duty for five or four or three or however many games you want to write them in at. Still fall in line with Act 311, which is a lot.
Yeah.
You can't just like that, man. Did that, did that for everything, not pay anybody a dime?
And that's not what we're trying to accomplish. This is an area where we felt like, you know what, we could do better, you know? And so, and that's why I bring this to you, is to look at, now, as a total cost, if we, because then the question becomes, like somebody said, where does this money come from, you know? If it were to come out of general fund, then that would be about $13,000. So my thought was, okay, do we want general fund to pick it up? Do you want to defer it to the school? And then like the junior high would pay $43.03 about, the high school would pay $81.33, or do you want to defer it to the sport? So like if you work a football gate, it comes out of the football gate money. If you work a baseball gate, it comes out of the baseball gate money. If you work basketball, it comes out of the basketball gate money. And that is what the majority of the districts do, is have it come out of the gate money. Of course, you have, yes.
If that happens, I would rather my parents do the gate.
And you have that option.
And then that goes to my booster club.
Since we all did the.
That's what I would do, if you would say that, I would say, I'd rather them do that.
You're gonna run into a problem of who's paying for the officials.
Exactly, then you're gonna run into that.
Okay, so how would we?
Well, we have another option. You know, we could say, oh, if you're looking at, as far as what we've already voted on, it's $7,000 and $600, which is $7,600. And then you add this to it, and we're looking at around $20,000 total. And, and don't bring it out of the gate, don't bring it out of anything. Use the, use our sales tax, because this is a picture sour, basically. Use our sales tax to pay for, and if they can pull it out at the end of the year, I would have this keep up with, with just how much, you know, you pay during the year as far as the school, and good thinking of the school, and pull it out of the sales tax.
That's, that's easy.
That's just something you have to think about, you know?
We have a lot of teachers in here, how do you feel?
Before, in the commentary, I had to share a bearing yesterday that our retirement rate is going down. Yeah, I remember the number, 26 to 21 percent. That's gonna save the teachers paying in the sales tax fund about $140,000. So that's gonna be a savings right there. So, I mean, I could easily pay for this. Now, knowing the past, you talked about using any excess or recovery as well, so there's that side as well.
David, I don't think this is easy. Anything other than a general fund, I'll be fine.
Okay.
Now, if it's coming out of general fund, I'm not, because of a variety of reasons, because I shouldn't.
I would.
Yeah, I mean, because again, you know, you can't keep dipping, dipping, dipping. I think, Nick, like I told you yesterday, if it's basketball, because basketball, Abby, how do you guys do it? Because if this person's coming at 5:00, they're serving boys and girls. Is it just the one individual sport playing for it, or how does that typically work?
We, most of the time, we don't get teachers to do our gate.
You get, because I haven't been to a game in six years, I can't tell.
We just get like our parents or, now, football and baseball and softball, we do get teachers to do it.
So you wouldn't have an issue with basketball, finding?
No, well, that's another question I asked you this other day. If we have people that want to do it out as a volunteer, so like Michelle Linsing, who does a lot of.
We were talking about just doing a form, just saying, I understand, I'm volunteering, I won't get paid to do it. Because sometimes it's a volunteer form, because, you know, there's a lot of people who are gonna do this, they want to be with the kids, and they want to see.
And that'll help the sport out, wouldn't it?
Right.
Does baseball do the same, do they have volunteers, like parents or something that want to?
I'm not sure about baseball, softball-wise.
Well, that's.
Uh, softball, we just. Ninety percent of the time, we'll have a girl there, a softball player there, until we have an adult, which is ninety percent of the time, they're heavy, so.
But what if, on softball and baseball, what if you did get a parent, or even the girls? Because there are some that play.
Which, we do concession, so we have a concession duty, so it's nothing to add a parent.
Right, but if we did that, could you turn around and instead of putting it in the booster, put it in the account, that way you could pay your officials, that's just part of it.
It could.
Because, you know, as a parent, you don't pay anything to play. So there's nothing going in.
Yeah, we don't charge, nothing, so that could be their fee.
And one thing that they've done, we have done in the past, is you could have, like, you could tell that the parent, the expectations that you have to work the gate, and have the varsity parents work the JV game, and the JV work the varsity.
Kind of how we do concessions.
Yeah, just do it the same way, so you don't miss any of your child.
And so some sports would rather just pay somebody to do it, and some sports would rather just have volunteers. I think if it goes back to the sports responsible for it, and if you pay, it comes out of your fund, and if you don't, then it's not.
My only worry is like for the elementary, you know, and we don't really have anything to gate. And if you take it out of the sales tax, and those teachers at the elementary level are getting money taken away that they don't necessarily.
Yeah, and that's probably just.
I think this, but I think this is what Brandon and I said. I think, I'm not gonna try to speak for you, but I think, Nick, I would feel comfortable if the school worked out what was best for each individual school, as long as it's not coming out of general fund. I think it makes it easier, I think it gives you guys flexibility, I think it gives you autonomy, and I think it takes away from us coming and trying to tell you what you should do, because I'm not there, I don't, I don't know what would work. Abby, I don't know what would work for you. If you can get parents to volunteer, that's saving your money. If the boys can get parents to volunteer, relative to us saying this, that, or, as long as it's not coming out of general fund, I'm okay, and I don't know if we gotta do a policy right now, but.
I have a question. So if, let's say that I have teachers that are doing the gate, and it comes out of the sport, let's say that the sport pays for it, how are they gonna get paid? Are they gonna have to fill out a timesheet like we did before, and then they would, then it would be a net of 35, and then they would get a check on the tenth of the month, is that correct? Okay, I just want to make sure.
But you may have some, if you decide you want to go that route, because it's just easier, I think Angela and I talked about this when she worked in another district, it was a, here are the gate duties, sign up if you want to work, well.
Yeah.
You signed up. You wanted the money. So you may have people who sign, I'll work this, I'll work, you know, and then, by the end of the month.
We'll have an issue with that, I just want to make sure that I know that it's not coming out of, we actually have to fill out the timesheet, keep up with it.
So I would, David, I mean, I would say.
It should be easy to document.
But also, if it's not a teacher, say it's a parent, they're not paying $35.
The rate is 15 an hour for anybody who's not a teacher. If you had some parents who wanted to make a little extra, I mean, because if you had a parent who came and worked, you know, the three-hour duty here, that's $45, you know?
But if the janitor wanted to volunteer, what would he get, what would she get? See, I think the title should determine the performance of the individual person, because they're both doing the same job, they're doing the same thing. And as a matter of fact, the janitor may even work a little bit harder. Man, that's just me personally.
But I can see right now, well, foster father.
But as long as it's not coming out of general fund, I'm okay with it. I think if the school can work it out, Rand, I don't know about you.
Can't we lead it up to the sport?
Yes.
Yeah, like I would just give her about $35.
Right, that's what it should be, because.
But that's my sport.
Right, but the logic is that everybody's performing and doing the same, that there's no educational level that you got to have, and you're just out there accomplishing. And I think that would be, I just think.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I just think, you know, those janitors, and, you know, it's not worth their while, Nick, to do it for $15. And let's say it worked six hours, I mean, I think we need to look at what's fair, you know? And I think the schools can determine what's fair for you guys more so than I can. And I'll speak for them, I think the board is not in a position to tell you guys, because we don't know enough information about it. I'm just trying to be honest about it. I don't feel comfortable doing something. I mean, is this how you guys feel?
Well, I don't, I just, I understand what everybody's saying, but I just think if we're, if Act 311 is gonna be done right, and I know, you know, it's not a good thing. I mean, I'm against anybody imposing something on the school business. But especially this group that's down there right now. But, but to do this right, I don't see how, you know, this is supposed to be additional compensation through their salaries. So how are you gonna, how are you gonna say that I'm gonna have a booster club pay $35 an hour to those teachers and still?
They would still have to, so the salary schedule, if I'm hearing what we've discussed, the salary schedule at a minimum would have to be followed. They're gonna turn in the timesheet to payroll, and then payroll's gonna pay it, but then payroll's gonna bill the school for that money. And that school is gonna pay for it out of the sports account. Like at the high school and at the junior high, you have a football account, a baseball account.
I understand how you have it right now. And you're telling, what you're saying right now is we're gonna leave it just the way it is. Say we're gonna pay them more, or pay them, or pay them.
We're not paying them at all.
Well, no, we're gonna pay them now, or we're gonna pay them a little bit more.
We're gonna pay them the minimum of the salary schedule, which is $35 an hour, and then each sport could decide if they want to pay non-teachers more than that. More than 15.
Or if they're gonna get volunteers, or actually paying the teachers.
Well, volunteers are all too, you don't have to worry about that.
That's right, that's right.
But what we do have to worry about is make sure that we fall in line with the way we disagree.
I just, I want to state something that's probably gonna be really unpopular, but this is what we're talking about on the back row, and I feel like I need to say it. No, no, actually, it's not. So here's my thought, as a parent of a kid involved in high school sports and the life of somebody who runs a booster club. So if we say that this is gonna come out of booster club funds, then that's gonna obligate people like my husband to go to local banks and ask you to pay money to pay teachers to work the gate. And if we don't do that, if we take it out of the sport, well, that is gonna take away the money that those teams use to buy uniforms and helmets and pads, the things that we don't charge kids for. And if that's what we decide that we want to do, I don't actually care. I just want it to be said out loud that that's what, either way, we're taking away from the kids in some way.
So one way that we can combat that, and there's some conversations we had, is let's do what we can to increase attendance at these events. And so I think we can do that by having, you know, performances by certain groups at halftime or in between games, because that's gonna draw more people to the event. If you have, I know when Jackson was playing baseball, we had like Dixie Youth Night. So any kid who came in their Dixie Youth uniform got in free, and then their parents came too. And so you're increasing your gate, and if you increase your gate, then that covers the cost to pay the person to actually.
It's a good experience with kids, too, because they may never ever go to a high school game. But then at night, it's like, I can get it free, so. But then, that night, it's like, I can get it free, so we can.
I mean, I'm looking at somebody that actively raises funds for a booster club or a sport. If two hundred and fifty-eight dollars is something that I have to go out and do a little bit extra, I'm okay. If my sport decides that the booster club's not gonna, is gonna pay it and not the actual athletic club, that's fine. And even if you look at softball and baseball, a lot of times, we have games on the same night. We would split that anyway, because you need one teacher to work or whatever, and if you have a volunteer, you don't pay that money. So, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, I see the same people at these games collecting money over and over again, and that's time they're taking away from their families. I think they should be compensated.
I'm not saying they shouldn't be compensated, I just hate that we have to take money away from programs that are helping kids to do it.
I hear it, I hear it.
And that's the frustrating thing about this law, is that they mandated we do these things, but they gave us no money. And so, we have to, we have to have these tough conversations about where's the money gonna come from.
Well, Nick, I don't think the money's being taken away, I think if you really want to make the tough decision, which I think Brandon and I cannot say you guys can, I think we can make a decision where the money should come from. I think what we're saying is, rather than us do that, let you guys work it out, which would be one of the best choices of you guys, because I can tell you exactly where the money should come from right now, if we want to vote on it. But I think for the purposes of letting you guys float this boat the way you wanted it to, I think that's the best way to deal with it.
And then each sport, each sport just be responsible, and I'm not saying it come out of the booster club, it would come out of the school account.
Right.
David looked at school accounts yesterday, and they're all pretty dopey.
But a sport could decide.
Absolutely, we want the volunteers.
We don't want it to come out of our athletics account.
And, Ren, I don't know if you're willing to go this far, I mean, I would be, if it got to a point, and whatever resolutions we make, if it got to a point where we had to take some money out of the general fund to offset, then as long as it's approved by finance committee or whatever, we still can do that, I'm flexible to that, because I don't want anybody to be penalized, I don't know if you are, but I'm resistant to all of it coming out of general fund. And Rebecca, to your point, we don't want to take away from kids, but we ought to realize that, you know, sports is extracurricular, it's not even that.
And we're taking it from kids regardless, of whether it comes through the sport or general fund.
Yeah, so, I don't have a problem with, if at some point we had to go to the general fund.
And we could always come back and reduce hours in the year.
If this isn't, yeah, if this isn't working.
Yeah.
So, what you're saying, though, is that, Dave, now, what they're saying is that it's gonna be part of those salaries, if the way is set up, the booster club pays the teacher, and however y'all say, and then they bill so-and-so, and they bill so-and-so, and then you go back to the school, and the school pays such and such.
But I would think that would be not.
But as a teacher himself, or a person that's working herself, it's gonna be added to their salary, to their check that month.
Well, it'd be a separate check on the tenth of the month.
Why is it separate?
Because any extra is, like.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, twenty-fifth is basic payroll, tenth is anything extra.
So, ten or ten is paid on the tenth of the next month.
Yeah, that's just the way it is. Anytime you're paid extra, it's not your pay.
It would be hard to throw all that all into one.
No, it's a separate payroll, but it is a payroll.
It's added to their total earnings, yeah, it is added to the total earnings.
It's just a separate check, it's regular salary.
So, try this way for a year?
So, everybody thinks that the football team, the baseball team, everybody's gonna be going along with the tactic, they're gonna be paying the school.
And if they choose to have volunteers?
Hey, man, if you're gonna vote, long as it's not coming out of general fund, I'm good.
I got the door.
Well, that's good for that, if something happens, then we're looking at, we're also looking at the.
So, do we need to make a motion on that?
Huh?
Do we need to make a motion on this gate duty before we go back to the.
Yeah, make a motion on this?
So, everybody's good with trying it for a year to see how it works, coming out of the sports account, not the booster.
The sports school account.
And, Abby, y'all okay with that?
Yes.
Not Maria, uh, what's her name? Alana, you okay with that coming out of your sports, Abby, y'all, your sports account to be paid?
It can come out of my general account, but it can, I mean, most of our sports, basketball, I don't think has, you know, doesn't have the team as a football, of course.
Right.
So, as we were talking about, each sport, coach person's gonna have to find a volunteer, or they're gonna have to come out of sport. But then here comes the problem, what if you can't find a volunteer, I meant, sorry, you can't find somebody to work?
I think they're gonna sign up if they're getting paid.
Do you have, do you have a problem finding people now?
Yeah.
As Jordan told you, I did most of softball.
But I think you're gonna find that if you're paying them.
There's gonna be a difference between softball and.
Our girls played, you had to.
That's what's pushing me for people years ago, is that used to, it was a requirement from, like, a parent, if your kid played softball and you played varsity, you worked the JV game, like, that's kind of what, in your past, is how it was.
I don't know when that changed, because remember, you got a lot of kids from high school that are raised by grandparents who can't go and volunteer. So, add activities, and, so you said, you said, you.
All the time.
Even faculty members.
Yes, sir.
To participate in basketball?
Any of it.
Really?
Yes, sir.
This didn't change, because usually, you know, people, they become involved.
We've talked about this too, like, where my sister came from in Alabama, it was, like, we let all our teachers in free to all the games. That didn't, in Alabama, you had to sign up for a gate duty, then you got a season pass to football.
You think that'll work?
And then if you signed up for basketball, when you worked that duty, you got a season pass for basketball.
You think that'll work?
I don't, I don't know.
I think, I mean, each sport could try whatever they wanted to on that, you know? Uh, Jordan, I would like for him to say what he.
Well, I'm not gonna say credit to them, but like, we were talking about, like, for softball, like, do a Dixie Youth Night, increase your attendance, all right, do a junior high night, increase your attendance. Those two gates by theirself will probably pay for the non-volunteers for the year, you know, give or take, you know, probably a couple hundred dollars or so, but that may would pay for your non-volunteers right there for the year, just by increasing those.
I don't know, I mean, when Jesse was, they had an alumni.
Yeah, an alumni.
I mean, there were tons of people there, that would pay.
And I remember, when I first left Union Central, we did at the basketball game, we had the elementary kids come and do their little dribbler stuff at halftime, and that brought in a big crowd.
You could bring the cheer and dance team from elementary.
I think they're performing.
I think you can bring the cheer and dance team, so parents just.
All that's fine, but we need to make a motion as to whether we're gonna have the sports take responsibility for paying or not. Y'all figure out whatever you want to do in the meantime.
I think having those options out there makes it a little bit easier to swallow.
You got some blood pressure meds?
I'm gonna make a motion.
I like that, Ren.
A second.
The motion is to go ahead and let each sport do it? And then we'll look at it next year and see how it goes. Does that sound good for everybody?
So, each individual school can do what they want.
Each individual school, or each individual sport.
So, Abby, is that something y'all willing to try in high school, because I like that idea.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll try it.
Yeah, I think it's a real good idea. So, Nick, all of this stuff right here, I'm assuming somebody doing in-service will explain all this.
Yeah, Anne has said that, so.
Got a motion.
Got a motion?
We got a second. All in favor?
So, back to the teacher's job description.
And everybody was good with the teacher description.
So, based on that, if you look on the second page of the teacher amendment, where it says number four, extracurricular activities, the first bullet is the work concession and gate, and the second is attend all meetings of clubs. We can X that out now that he's passed the other. So, we'll take that out of the amendment, addendum to the amendment. On the second page, number four, extracurricular activities, of the teacher. Not the, not the job description, the amendment, the amendment, addendum. Proposed amended teacher job description. Yeah, I just want to, I want to take off the part about gate duty and clubs, because we just decided we're gonna add compensations out. That's it.
So, we need to vote on it, or are we, okay. I'll vote if we, I'll, I make the business, or whatever that you did.
But we accept the amendments to the job descriptions to be added, you know?
The proposed amendments.
The proposed amendments, yes. Take that, take that off, that we just added that compensation.
Yeah, that's what we'll come back to.
So, now, we're gonna take that off, because they're gonna be compensated. It's not an expectation, it's a compensation.
And we're gonna change about.
Yes, change. Yes, I added that.
Graduation.
Yes, yeah, those are all in my pile.
Y'all think everybody would do the same?
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Now, where are we?
Adjourn, adjourn, adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
I think, what I, what I found, Abby, Abby.
Did you have something else to say?
What I found out is that success.